Call to order, the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the North Andover Planning Board.
Pursuant to Chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and two, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information on the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. Member that public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to Gene Enright at J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, so we have a couple of continued public hearings that have requested continuance. Is that right, Gene?
All three of them. Zero Turnpike requested until February twenty-eighth, and the other two until February seventh. Which is the next meeting.
Okay, so Zero Turnpike Street Middleton Farms LLC continued until February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Seventeen oh one Oz Good Street Extra Space Storage continued until February seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Fourteen Second and one forty-nine Main Street Second and Main LLC continued until February seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Okay, A and R Plan, one twenty-two Mill Pond, MAP ninety-five parcel one twenty-two Harkaway Road, Mary Ann Gillan, President Mill Pond Homeowners Association. Applicant proposed to divide one lot into two lots. The property is located in the R four zoning district.
Okay, so after review of the submitted plan, the building commissioner has communicated that the CBA area has not been determined in compliance with zoning by law one ninety-five seven point one A. So I was anticipating in your staff report a revised plan to be submitted. It has been submitted. That's what is being displayed now. As a similar approach to the last A and R plan you had for three twenty-seven Salem Street, the note now reflects that the contiguous buildable area is yet to be determined. And one of the lots is encumbered by buffer zones to a wetland that is located across Stevens Street. So the one hundred-foot buffer zone kind of splits the lot.
Okay, and what do we have for frontage on each of the lots?
So frontage on lot two is one hundred and fifty-one feet. Lot one is one hundred and sixty-four feet, plus or minus. Access can be via Harkaway Road. So it meets the lot area and access to the lots.
Okay.
So this parcel is where the existing tennis court is at Mill Pond Condominium Complex. So it's envisioned to be developed, lot split and developed.
No more tennis?
No more tennis.
Pickleball, maybe?
I don't know. My brother's big into pickleball, but I'm not.
It's a new thing. Okay, what would you like to tell us?
It's really, I'm here to answer any questions if there are any. It's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's compliant in front of an area. The wetlands across the street, we had flagged, and Amy came out to look at those and confirm that they were legitimate. I think the town might have subsequently chopped down the shoulder growth there, but she was out there to see those, and they were surveyed prior to that. We know that we'll have to submit a filing to CONCOM, you know, for consent to that officially. And it remains to be seen if there's any other filings other than just, you know, defining the wetland.
Okay, and so the CBA area will be taken up with the building inspector, correct?
That's my question. Is there, Tom, is there any reason why you can't put the CBA on there? If you have the wetlands delineated, it's a pretty simple thing to...
Yeah, the, um, we had them on there. We thought that the preference based on the other applications recently reviewed was to have that subsequently determined because we haven't been before CONCOM to confirm that wetlands, even though, you know, the agent has been out there and confirmed it. We haven't actually done a formal filing at this point.
So building commissioner, it's a zoning bylaw issue, the CBA. It needs to be seventy-five percent of the minimum lot area required, which would be approximately ninety-five hundred square feet. However, the building commissioner's determination is that the wetland resource areas include the buffer zones, or includes all the way up to one hundred feet, which looks like it about splits the lot. He's got a legal opinion from town council supporting his determination.
I gotta tell you, I don't, I mean, as one who put that thing together originally, I don't think that was ever the original intent, I mean, to include buffer zones. And it was just to include the wetlands. It, I mean, it becomes a bigger issue when it's, a lot is really small, but the idea was that there was enough upland in the thing, and as if...
I've communicated that. Town council has administered a legal opinion at this point, so...
Just in the way of, if I could, just in the way of clarification on that, we originally had the dividing line further to the east, to the right, yeah. And the CBA, based on that calculation methodology that excludes anything within the wetland buffer, the hundred-foot buffer, was slightly short of the ninety-three seventy-five. So we moved that line twenty-one or so feet to the west to make sure that it had over the ninety-two seventy-five.
Oh, you mean the lot line you...
The new lot line.
Yeah, the lot line, yeah.
I mean, you know, the interesting thing, just, you know, your comment, I mean, has been one of my pet peeves for years, is that, you know, we, on the one hand, we're excluding buildable area from the CBA, which is kind of contradictory. We can build within the hundred.
Not that we relitigated, but I remember when we put that together, I don't think that was ever the intent, but be that as it may.
Right.
But I guess my point is, are you going to end up with CBA when this is done? Because I...
Yes.
I would show opposed going for a variance for the lack of it. I'd rather you just get it.
That's, we're not looking for a variance. The CBA is just over ninety-three hundred square feet in this arrangement. We just made that revision when we found out that we're going to be subject to the exclusion of the hundred-foot buffer. So we've made sure, I mean, the reality is, it makes for an uglier building site on lot one. Lot two doesn't change, other than it gets bigger. We can still build within that hundred-foot buffer down to the fifty with CONCOM, so it doesn't affect that lot. But it does affect lot one because it just compromises the orientation of buildings. But that's with trying to make it comply and make it simple.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Gene, is there still a project going along here to put a trail into the old railroad bed? And is that any...
Well, it's a rare con, a project at this point, but yes, we're still working with StanTech Engineering Firm to, we envision potentially a rail trail to the rear of this.
And there's no conflict or interference with that?
Not with these lot lines.
Okay.
Could, why don't we get a motion to approve and have the planner sign the A and R plan for one twenty-two Mill Pond, MAP ninety-five parcel one twenty-two Harkaway Road?
I'm fine with making that motion, and I would also just make it to the subject that we will have the add the CBA at the earliest possible time. And, you know, because I don't want to get into a situation where people don't provide it at all. So I want to, you know, just ensure that we get it as quickly as possible.
Add the CBA to the... Mylar?
I mean, eventually, we have to, I think.
Not to endorse this plan? Because the note says that CBA is yet to be determined, but for him to pull a building permit, the building commissioner will require...
Well, actually, before we pull a building permit, let's get the CBA, so we have it, you know.
Yeah, we'll need to do that with CONCOM anyway, so, you know.
Okay, so add a condition that it be added to the plan?
For a building permit or zoning application.
Right, at that time, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made. Okay, a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? And can we use this to call roll as well?
Yes.
All right, Kelly?
Here and yes.
Okay, remotely, here and yes. Alyssa?
Here and yes.
I vote here, and I vote yes. John?
Here and yes.
Peter?
Here and aye.
Okay, we are all here, except for Sean, who is not here, and we all approve. All right, that's approved.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, discussion items. Inclusionary housing requirement, floodplain, Dover bylaw, these are all potential zoning Does anyone have any comments about the inclusionary housing? Or the floodplain? Gene, when would be our first public hearing on those?
I didn't bring the calendar.
Sometime in February, though?
I think it's the last meeting in February, which is the twenty-eighth.
Okay, great. So if anyone does have any comments between now and then, please let us know, okay? Dover bylaw, what do you tell us about that?
All right, so at the last meeting, I somewhat introduced a plan for a proposed bylaw amendment to site plan review, which would separate out Dover uses from the special permit required under site plan. And to do that, it's a GIPACIT, but essentially, the purpose of site plan remains intact. All it does is add a criteria for Dover uses, which would go through a limited site plan review. And that limited site plan, as I scroll through here, you'll see everything for site plan stays intact. The only thing we do is refer for a limited site plan to the last section, which is eight point eighteen. So we add a new section to account for those. But otherwise, everything for site plan, the approval required, the exceptions for it, the waiver provisions, everything remains intact. Information required is all intact. So as I scroll through, and we just specified now review criteria and design guidelines. I specified for site plan review. And again, all those criteria for design guidelines, general, environmental, traffic, design, stormwater, landscape, everything remains intact, as well as the findings by the planning board for site plan review, where you can conditionally approve decisions. And then revisions for site plans, all still intact, nothing changes. What changes is a new section gets added for limited site plan review for religious uses, educational uses, and childcare facilities. And essentially, the first section, the purpose, lists the seven criteria, which you can reasonably regulate under site plan review. So it's still a formal process with the planning board. The information required is, there's a new application that they filed for limited review, and then evidence supplied by the applicant of the building commissioner's written determination as to whether the provisions of forty-eight section three are applicable. So they need to first request a written determination from the building commissioner, and they have to supply that to the planning board. And then, it gives kind of the review context for the planning board and its relationship for bulk and height, setbacks, arrangement of parking, all that, those seven criteria are listed that you can weigh in on, lighting, safety, fire protection. We found a model in Concord, Mass, that we pretty much incorporated here, and so they requested some sustainability and resiliency principles, which we probably should add to our site plan review, but I've included it in the Dover one. And then the planning board has authority to still seek third-party review if warranted. What changes a little bit here, and to be honest, I have the first meeting with town council on Thursday morning to review this.
Go back up to lot, I'm sorry. The eighteen point nineteen one.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to specify. So there could be an instance where the zoning board has some jurisdiction for either a special permit or a variance on one of these applications. And so the way this is constructed is, an application would still go before the planning board, and the planning board would write a report to the zoning board, who would have to take those recommendations into consideration. We can totally separate it, this is like the very first pass. Otherwise, if that, if they didn't have any purview over special permit or variance, then the planning board writes a decision that gets filed with the town clerk's office. And they have a ninety-day window, which is the same as you have for site plan review, a ninety-day window to submit a decision to the clerk.
Could we have it, would it be possible to do it where they get the determination that it's a Dover project, submit their documents here, and then if they need to get, as part of our approval process, if they need approval from the zoning board, that they go get that and then come and bring that to us?
Yeah, I just, again, that's a question I have for town council. I just want to make sure that's reasonable regulation, that we're not overstepping in terms of putting through approval process.
If they need a ZBA approval, they need the ZBA approval either way, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it would only take, if they need, it's only if they need ZBA approval. If they don't need it, they don't need it. But I'd rather not give away our special permit granting authority because there's some, because I could see it, maybe there are times when people would rather go in front of the zoning board than the planning board. I don't know, but I wouldn't want that to be an out, where someone could say, I'm going to get out of this by filing for a ZBA.
And I would say, it's not as much get and go, because it still requires a filing and a report from the planning to the ZBA.
Right.
But we could separate and make them go through both too. I don't...
Is that practically speaking, sort of the way we handle the split jurisdiction now? I mean, we, our preference is that if there's a variance involved, that it becomes done before, because how can you work to approve something if it's not legal?
They can file it currently, but usually you wait for the ZBA to issue the decision. Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, I think I'd prefer that.
I have a couple of questions while you're not done.
So I have to talk about the appeal procedure with town council, so I'm not going to really get into that at all, and then...
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure we can...
I don't think so either. Conca does, and that's why I included it for now.
I, I think, because, so...
The point of this is to not have that provision.
And if, right now, so right now, we're kind of, we've been pretty lucky that we haven't had anyone, you know, say, we can't regulate us, we're Dover. But if that did happen, right...
So we did the town.
Right, except for the town, except for us. But if that happened, I don't think we could make them go through the forty-eight type of appeal. So I don't think we can legislate that they have to go through it when they wouldn't even need to go through this in the first place.
Yep.
Like, I like this idea because I think it makes it easier for people to actually go through the process and use the Dover criteria and make it a smoother process and not so cumbersome, and maybe prevent some of that friction. But I, that appeal thing troubles me. I don't know that we can legally do that.
I totally agree, and I think the appeal period is at the time of building permit. I think that's when they get to appeal a building permit issuance, and so I...
Or non-issuance, right.
Right, and so I definitely have that as one of my questions with town council.
Okay. The only other thing I have before Peter goes is, should there be any references to the actual Dover amendment? So what if something changes therein? How does that affect this? So let's say a new use is added to Dover, right? Right, because we have childcare facilities, and we have some, what if the law, the state law changes? We can always amend our bylaw after that, but should we have some sort of catch-all that allows if the state law changes, then that's incorporated in here? I'm not sure if we should or not, but that's just a question I kind of have.
What do you do in any way? I mean, just say that this is consistent with the terms of state law, or I mean...
You would, but, but because we can only do changes once a year.
Yeah.
There may be a lapse period, so if state law changes to now allow, you know, some other type of facility that we haven't thought of into Dover, and then we get an application in that period where the bylaw doesn't match up with the state law, it just puts us in an odd position.
We reference forty-eight section three a number of times, and we might just add as amended or something to that effect.
Right, yeah, just something on top. Peter, go ahead.
So can you remind me why we're doing this?
Yeah, because there's always somewhat of a healthy tension. I mean, Brooks and Merrimack College certainly have gone through this process time and time again, but it also leaves them, as well as the town, susceptible to an appeal. And as we know, the raclex in this area went through that appeal, and gratefully so. Municipal use is governed by our zoning bylaw, but we've left all these uses also susceptible to that type of appeal.
Okay, and my second question, with respect to Brooks, are there elements of Dover that could put protection of the lake and the drinking water supply at risk, where we have watershed special permit authority, but is there, could an entity like Brooks use Dover to override some key aspect of that and put the watershed, the lake, at risk? I mean, where, where does the application cases overlap protection of the drinking water supply? Because, I mean, I think we should be aware of that, and, I mean, I, I get Dover, but, boy, anything that would override protection for drinking water would really strike me as something that would be worthy of a lot of attention.
Well, I'm going to ask a question, a tangential question on that. This bylaw doesn't change really anything in terms of the criteria that we're allowed to apply. It's just matching state law with what we're allowed to do anyway. But that's, that is an interesting question. If you have, if Brooks went through this process to apply for a limited site plan review permit, would they still need to get a watershed special permit if such was required?
Kind of what I'm asking is that...
Does this take it right?
This is good intent.
Right.
But is there an unintended consequence that exposes us somewhere, specifically in the watershed in Brooks? We shouldn't be envisioning Merrimack alone. We should be envisioning that huge sloping, bright green lawn draining down into the lake with all the buses.
As I understand this, this only replaces what, if you only need site plan review? So if you need a site plan, if you only need a site plan review special permit, now you can get a limited site plan review. But if you need other permits, you would still have to...
But I thought the way Dover is technically written, because now that Peter mentioned it, it's that I thought Dover allows these entities to basically ignore all zoning.
Correct.
And wouldn't it then ignore watershed special permits? I mean, technically, don't they have the right now to basically...
Other than the items that are listed, so if we go back to the seven items, yes.
Where's the seven items?
Bulk and height of structures, yard sizes...
I'm sorry, what page are you on? I can't see the page.
One ninety-five, eight point one eight, page nine. So it's bulk and height of, or structures and determining yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. So my understanding is that technically, John, is correct right now. If they, if they chose to, if they chose to ignore our zoning, then they would have that opportunity right now.
I wonder if there really are that many entities that can, that enjoy Dover protections immediately adjacent to surface drinking water supplies? And my guess is, there's probably very few, and I wonder if the state actually missed this. And I, I wonder if it's worth raising this to say, hey, are you sure you wanted Dover to exclude protection of surface drinking water supplies?
Interesting question.
And we should do that, I think, before it comes to a head.
Okay, I mean, it's an...
I mean, what I'm saying is, I think we should go to the state and pose this question and ask for relief for, not that we have a pending action, but protection for a surface drinking water supply.
Well, Dover doesn't cover conservation, right?
Does wetland requirement, that they have to show wetlands? So let's, let's get the question answered before we jump to that. Let's get the question answered. Do they, are they exempt from water source protection? I don't think they are.
Practically speaking... Fortunately, we haven't had to deal with that as a real problem today, but, you know, I mean, who knows? Anything could change.
I think the people we're dealing with have not chosen to do that, but what if there's a new...
New regime, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, then something is built that is detrimental, then what are you going to do? Unbuild it? I mean, so, but I agree with Gene, and I'm sorry, I was implying, but I didn't say, I should have said, let's ask the question. But let's ask it, you know, to have a high degree of confidence in the answer, so that if push came to shove, are we protected there or not? And if we think we might not be, then I think we ought to think about going to the state.
So the implication is, like I said, we modeled it off to Conca, and they have an allowance for, in case the ZBA requires a special permit or a variance, which then says that there are some zoning criteria that even Dover has to go seek that special permit.
Yeah, I just don't know how Dover is written, whether Dover has any exclusions for like what Peter was...
Yeah, I've read it a number of times, and I don't see those exclusions, but...
No, but again, it only applies to zoning.
Right.
So it means you can be exempt from zoning, so that doesn't necessarily mean you're exempt from...
Wetlands?
Wetlands, the Wetland Protection Act, CONCOM requirements, things like that.
But the thing is...
But you may be excluded from our particular...
Watershed.
Watershed special permit.
And, you know, wetlands is everywhere.
Right.
So there's a lot of experience and awareness, but surface drinking water supplies are not very common, so I just think we ought to do some due diligence here before we are in a pressure situation.
Yeah.
And it's not because of these changes...
No, no, it's separate, yeah.
These changes are triggering the question.
Yep, that's a good question. Okay.
If you're available Thursday morning, you're welcome to join the meeting.
Thursday.
It's nine thirty on Thursday.
We need to get that six-year-old involved in this.
As of now, I have court, so we'll see. I'll be at Brooks Thursday afternoon.
What percentage of, sorry, what percentage of town does this cover? Like, how much area are we talking about in North Andover is covered under the Dover amendment?
So there's no particular amount, so it's not actually land-based, it's use-based. So think of it this way, Merrimack in general will be covered by Dover, but some things that they do might not necessarily be covered. It has to be for an educational use. So for instance, let's say they built, you know, there had been that talk about building the hotel at Royal Crest. That wouldn't be covered because a hotel is not really, I don't think, maybe they argue it would be, whether it's an educational use or not. You know, if kids aren't working there for a hospitality program or something, just as a hotel. So, or if Merrimack, some, you know, when I was working in Beverly, there was discussions about whether a conference center at Endicott qualified under Dover. And there's some give and take, and there's some gray area there, and ultimately it comes down to a business building inspector. But wherever there's a religious use, an educational use, or childcare facility theoretically could be covered by the Dover amendment? So how many childcare establishments?
Say for-profit childcare facility included in that?
I don't think, I don't think there's any distinction.
And it applies to municipal educational facilities as well.
Good question, I don't know.
Who's Dover?
Maybe the town, I don't know, or I don't know. I don't know.
It could be quite a bit of land, too, right? North Andover could, could be covered under Dover.
Famous case...
Yeah, there's a lot.
There's a lot. Supplies to a good portion, could, could apply to a good portion of town.
Yes.
So Kelly, it would apply to the entire town if one of the proposed uses was proposed on that land parcel? So it's, it's, like Gene said, it's use-based. So if we propose a new school out at, what was it, Vision Foster Fields at one time? Then that would be a protection under Dover.
It looks like it's named after a case, Attorney General versus the town of Dover. So it's actually Massachusetts General Law Forty-eight, section three, that's the actual law.
And is it replicated in other states, or is this unique to Massachusetts?
Oh, I don't know. I, I don't know.
Were there many other towns? Do you think this got borrowed from Dover, lifted from Dover? As an example, were there other towns that in Massachusetts that have something similar? Is it, is this common across the state? Or would it just be the two of us?
No, there's many, many towns, especially the college-type towns have them. Framingham has a really, really intense one. I thought Conca was real, much lighter lift, but, but many towns have them. Andover has a, the application actually was modeled after Andover.
Okay, great. That's a great, that's a great start, Gene, and just keep us posted as to...
I've asked Brian to get some of the decisions that are issued, because I really don't know what a decision looks like. And so we've reached out to Conca to try to get that, to see what that looks like. Because it'll be different than site plan review, obviously.
We're really focusing on the bulk height, yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can make recommendations. I'm not sure you can condition, but you can make recommendations. And then my questions are, who enforces those recommendations and things like that? So it's definitely a work in progress, but I think after we meet with council on Thursday, I'll have a better sense.
Okay. Okay. Fantastic. Okay, meeting minutes. Can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2023?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
I'm standing over to hear.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote yes. Four yeses, one abstain. Anything else before we adjourn?
So moved.
Very good. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made?
Second.
Second, all in favor. Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Yes. Very good. Sounds great.